I think we'll go ahead and get our budget work session underway. And I'll turn it over. Presentation, and then we'll move into Q and A. We'll do two rounds, three maybe, depending upon where we end up after the second round. And I'm going to be taking notes so that we have a sense of where we ended up tonight. And the only other thing that I would offer is we will allow follow-up questions. If people could have their questions back into me, I can't even remember the date that I assigned to that by this Friday. If they can send them directly to me, I will compile and provide them to the superintendent, who will provide written responses. The only other thing that I would offer is that if after tonight, we determine we would like to establish the 28th as another date for a work session before we move to April 4th, which is where we will certify and adopt, we need to decide that tonight so that we can get that calendared and on the agenda.
Because we still have the 21st.
We still have the 21st, correct. So we could actually wait until the 21st. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Matt.
Thank you. And Shashank, you're going to work the clicker there. Can I, is that okay? Can I, just to see what slide run? Thank you, sorry. So you'll, the format for tonight and the organization of our budget presentation specifically around input and investments in the foundational tier in order to meet board goals is similar to what we did two weeks ago or three weeks ago on February 7th. So you'll find sort of a similar format. The agenda is that we're going to just, you know, sort of maybe quickly hit a review of requirements of our budget, just to keep us all calibrated on the same, and on the same page around what we need to submit and when we need to submit it. We'll talk a little bit about, just a very brief recap of what we discussed last budget work session. That includes specific investments and inputs and that universal tier area around access, professional learning, grade level curriculum instruction. And then we'll jump into the strategic investments and board goals in the foundational tier, and specifically hitting on SCL implementation, engagement, health and well-being, school safety, and of course, we added cybersecurity for obvious reasons. So in terms of the budget development timeline, the upcoming dates that we added is March 17th. This is as a result that we need to have our budget published 10 to 20 prior to the public hearing. So we're looking at March 17th, and that published in the register. The other timeline that we added was just the community conversations, which took place, I think it was last week. These days are running together now, Shashank. So gave you some quick numbers. Just want to thank again Kevin and Rosie and Shashank, Cass, Cassandra, and others who helped pull that together. We had over 130 different in-person community members and staff members attend these sessions. And so I don't know how that specifically compares to previous year's budget conversations.
Higher.
I feel like it's 100 times higher.
At least.
Throw that out.
At least.
At least. So we had great conversations, good engagement, and just a lot of, some great questions. And so what we've done is compiled those lists of questions as they've been asked and have provided responses and are posting that to the website. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, along with the slide deck.
I might just add, I know that multiple board members participated. But I thought the content was perfect. The engagement levels were amazing. I think for some people, this was information, but for others, it definitely was education. And I don't think you ever go wrong when you educate people about where district resources not only come from, but how we propose to deploy them. So kudos to you guys for really great presentation and to the community as well for showing up and really sort of leaning into our process. I think it's one of the best ones we've had.
Thank you. And then on March 22nd, we'll engage in a virtual, another one, in a virtual setting that will also be recorded, and then we'll post that to the website as well.
And so, Matt, if people have questions that they want to submit while they're watching, or what is the process?
There's a link.
So we will provide a link, and we will provide a window of around five to six days for the community to come back to us, whatever questions they provide. Prior to the April 4 meeting, we will post them on our site, DMS site.
So sometime around March 22nd, public input would start? Is that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Got it. Thank you.
What accommodations will be available for the community to participate in that virtual session on the 22nd?
We had BFLs over there, which we announced, and we said if any BFL, if anyone wants help from them, they can be there. And we had provided childcare, especially for the afternoon session or evening sessions, I would say, not for the morning. Provided childcare. Now, if it's virtual, it is going to be available to view anytime. As far as the language goes, we've not really discussed that, but that is something which we will definitely consider.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
In the requirements for the budget adoption certification, again, our revenue and our fund balance.
Before you proceed.
You bet.
Phil just sent an update. End of the first quarter, score is Hoover 10, and whoever they're playing, we don't really care about them, 11. So a one-point difference. So, but that's the end of the first quarter. True.
So the budget must be balanced.
Excuse me for a second. Go Huskies, go.
Yeah. We actually could do this at Wells Fargo Arena, if you guys would like.
Yes.
Right? So I'll do, I'll do my best to speak efficiently and answer any questions that you might have for tonight. So our revenue, our fund balance must be greater than our Eagle do, obviously, to our annual expenditure. So that's where we get to that balance. And ultimately, we'll need to have that property tax rate set, which again, it constitutes our general fund management pebble and pearl levies. Just want to give you a quick update on, we've had great collective bargaining with both ASME and our DME. It has resulted in a 3.8% increase, and so 14.1 million add to our budget for next year. And so this particular chart of the high-level view of the general fund gives you an idea of how we're actually constitute, how that, those funds are being accounted for in our reduction strategy. So I just wanted to, we had a, just want to, I know some of them are here tonight. I thank ASME leadership and our DME leadership for two sessions, great collective bargaining is a great experience. So thank you again for doing that. To get that balanced budget on that next slide, thank you, Shashank. Our knowns in terms of the amount of dollars that we have to find strategies for is 10.2 million. Unknowns, again, and these unknowns are wrapped up in a couple of different things. We're budgeting for 2 million. We've got, we're getting close with DMT RS and looking at where we might have some opportunities for investment in DMT RS, but we've also got that DBM Fox Lawson non-bargained study that's going on. And so that could be, we're utilizing these $2 million as an placeholder, recognizing that it could be as high as dollars.
One or two questions around the unknowns. With the, the property tax evolution, where there seem to be counties and cities who need to fill some shortfalls based on state budgeting, how if at all, does that impact us? And is that an unknown?
So you're talking about the property rollback, Jackie?
Correct.
And if that is going to impact us in different ways. So if you see in the previous slide, where was that? Where we, yes. So the general fund, management fund, pebble and pearl. So general fund, there are components like DOP. And DOP is calculated based on enrollment, per people cost, and a percentage. Once we have that value, then that will calculate the property tax rate. So that will most likely increase the property tax rate because the property values have come down. On the other hand, as far as pebble and pearl goes, they are rates-driven. So there's a rate has been fixed, and based on property values, applying that rate, we will get a lower value on pebble and pearl. So there's going to be a mixed bag between the two of them. Does that help? Thanks.
And then the only follow-up is, this year, with the evolution of the educational savings accounts, are there any impacts where DMPS has to provide support services? Is that worth monetizing, or is it just so unknown? It's unclear.
It's still unclear, and any sort of monetizing would actually be in FY '25, not FY '24.
So there's no expectation and/or
To date.
Law or regulation that tells DMPS it has to provide certain services?
That's correct. To date, that is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. So as it relates to our balanced budget, we've got a budget reduction strategy that's accounted for that. Again, there's just a couple of unknowns there that should become more known, and some of these in the days, and some of these in the next few weeks. So we'll, we'll continue to work with teams that are actually responsible and engaged in that conversation heavily right now regarding our Fox Lawson study and DMT RS.
Hey, Matt, can I just ask a quick timing question? So depending upon the Fox Lawson study and DMB and all of those things, that may or may not happen July 1. That potentially could happen later in the year, or are you projecting that when we get those recommendations, those are a July 1 implementation?
We're projecting it'll be a July 1 implementation.
Okay. Thank you.
So this recap of what we spoke about in the last board work session again was specific and intentional investments in the very, in the three goals around the universal tier. Just want to continue to lift up that what we're going to speak about tonight are specific investments and inputs and those foundational tier areas and in support of the board goals. And so there's going to be, what you'll recognize is, and I think it's intuitive, but investments in school safety is an investment in the board goal. It's not as directly associated as math curriculum, but having students and staff feel a sense of safety in their buildings, that is an investment in the board goal. So that's how this particular presentation was designed, to replicate what we talked about last time, but to actually utilize the foundational tier as the means by which we're placing inputs and investments. Okay. Again, the logic model is, is that we're going to speak a lot about inputs and these investments, and so the outputs are these levers, that we refer to as community levers, that are associated to these tiers. And of course, the outcomes of these particular inputs and investments are interim goals, interim guardrails alike. There's going to be potentially some other interim metrics that we would need to look at based on some of these new inputs that we're talking about investing in. So we'll, those may not be concrete tonight. There's some areas for us to continue to examine how we might measure some of these Investments, I continue to bring this slide to the table because I, it's represented from community voice from years ago, as well as the anti-racist town halls. What is in front of you is research-based around a concert of investments of these spaces that we have to have working in tandem. And so having students feel a sense of self, a sense of health and well-being, to feel safe, all of those again are foundational to students being ready to engage in high-creation activities. And so we continue to bring this to the table because it's important that I and the team and I continue to communicate, these investments work in tandem. None of these investments in isolation or alone are actually going to move the needle for our students and our staff and our families. These have to be done in tandem with one another and in concert. Okay, thanks, Shashank. Before we jump into the very specific investments, just thought we'd lift up again some of the why behind these investments and these foundational tiers, speaking with, of course, about the SCL implementation. There's some staggering statistics when it comes to Castle Research, around 13% of the students, our 13% points higher on standardized tests is where nationally, if we invest in social-emotional learning for students and for staff. We've got a 6% increase in graduation rates if we invest in social-emotional learning. And again, a lot of these things, you know, and that they are intuitive, but students having a sense of self-efficacy and some agency about themselves and about what they're bringing to school each day, it's going to translate into higher achievement, more engagement. Those things are just going to be logical next steps in terms of the student's learning progression and their overall experience. If we also look at the SCL implementation and the effect size, again, always bringing up Hattie, and you can see the very lengthy list of effect sizes for Hattie's research based on our implementation and our investments in SCL. There's also, Hattie also speaks to the effect size of investing in just engagement and student activities. So there's lots of opportunity here for us to continue to create spaces for students where they can thrive. And then the last on your list here on their particular slide is some research regarding the utilization of the panel, our own student data around safety and recognizing that right now, 57% of our students, 6 through 12, are responding favorably in terms of the, there's list articulated on our panorama. That speaks to the need to continue to invest in safety and making sure that students feel a safe environment, whether that's academically, socially-emotionally, physically. So we have to continue to invest in safety protocols and inputs to make sure that the student's whole child feels safe at all of our levels. So I just wanted to offer up some of the panorama, our own data as rationale and reason for why we would invest in these areas. Thanks, Shashank. Quickly, in terms of the alignment, our guardrail two and guardrail number four, specifically to social-emotional learning and students and staff feeling safe and welcome. And so we want to make sure that we continue to offer up these inputs and these investments as they are aligned and honoring the guardrails that you've put forth. And lastly, before we jump into the very specific inputs and investments, this is just a slide again to represent, there's four different categories that we're going to speak about investments in each of these areas. They are materials, professional learning, programs and staff, and partners and service providers. And so in each of these inputs, there are associated outputs that again are the levers, right? And these are these outputs that we're looking for to create safe spaces, to create engaging environments where everybody's feeling healthy and has a sense of well-being, and that they're connected to one another. So just another example of the logic model behind the inputs and the investments to get to these outputs. All right. I think I hammered down on that particular slide enough, so adding it for a second time never hurts. So the overview of this particular slide represents all of the investments, both for FY '23, and then for FY '24 in these specific categories, and these associated levers or these output areas of SCL, engagement, health and well-being, school safety, cybersecurity. So we're going to talk through each of these separately, but this just give you an overall view of this. Our current investment, 23 in each of these areas is $8.82 million. We are looking to add a significant amount of investments in these foundational tiers, staff and families, to the tune of 19.32. Let's jump in, Shashank.
Can I, a clarifying question? Cybersecurity, I'm trying to get my head around cybersecurity being part of this conversation because it's really an operational. So am I, am I saying that I should be looking at cybersecurity and this investment as part of an investment in the foundational tier?
Yeah, well, because the foundational tier not only speaks to students, but it speaks to staff and staff's sense of safety around their data and their personal identifiable information.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, great question. Thank you. So we'll jump into social-emotional learning, engagement, and mental health and well-being because these are directly associated with the guardrail put before us. So, Shashank? Thank you. So in FY '24, the inputs and the investments that we're looking to make, you can see in the FY, the inputs to the far left in terms of the categories, the dollar amount of the investment and the actions. And then, of course, the little asterisk represents some new investments, and then the outputs. And then to the right, you'll see some metrics of success. And the metric of success was added to this particular presentation, I think it was to you, Terry, that may have lifted up that opportunity last time we met, to begin to think about how we might measure some of these inputs. And so a lot of our measurement would actually be our interim guardrails that we would look to as the metric of success. But again, there's some other opportunities here as we continue to look at some of these inputs that may not necessarily be tied to the interim guardrail itself. It would be honoring of and within the interim guardrail itself, but there might be some very specific metrics that we're looking to associate to these inputs. The most significant inputs when it comes to SCL, you'll see there under DPS programs and staffing, 0.27 million, so 270,000. We are looking to hire that district-wide SCL support coordinator. That was a position that we lost at the very beginning of the school year. We are looking to replace that position moving forward. We were unsuccessful with that at the beginning of the school year. We would like to add that position back, again, to coordinate all of our SCL efforts across the school district and every classroom. So that's been a tough position to not have this whole year. I'll stop there. Of course, there's curricular materials that go with that. There's Castle training. You'll see a lot of professional learning associated with SCL. What I would continue to offer up is that SCL is not just a classroom-based curriculum and framework. It is a school-based curriculum and framework. And what I mean by that is how schools, how schools start the beginning of their day. For example, we've got many schools that do morning meetings. We've got many schools that do these brain breaks throughout the day, in terms of these signature practices. We've got many schools that do optimistic closings throughout the day. This is part of the Castle work and part of a system of supporting students and staff socially, emotionally, in their learning.
Matt, I just have a question. The SCL champions, now is that in all schools? Is it just
It is. It is. And those are, each of those SCL champions receive 80 hours' worth of training and support to continue to be the one that actually is supporting the school leadership team and driving that SCL work and continuing to lift this up on the front burner for all of us as we plan activities, talk about how we're actually going to engage in signature practices in each of our classrooms. So you're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So wait, it's one, is it one like teacher-admin person in each building that does this extra training?
There's stipend positions.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes. Yep. There's stipend positions. Okay. So these are the, again, the FY '24 investments in SCL.
Small amount of money, but the data literacy for partner service providers, can you give an example?
Yeah, so that comes from panorama and continuing to break down that data set that we get because it, it's a large data set. And so helping school-based staff, as well as district-based staff, to continue to learn all the data that's there, both in the individual and the aggregate, to be able to apply that knowledge to make informed decisions, whether they're a building-based decisions or district-wide decisions. So continue to build our knowledge around the data set that we have in front of us.
Thank you. So, I mean, really, our measurements are
Sorry.
After the fact, right? So how, how our students are responding to the panorama student survey. But you have a strong indication that you believe these investments are the right investments to get the results we want to achieve?
Based on research, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask one more clarifying question about panorama? So you're, so the, what is it, $80,000 investment is like an additional add-on package? Is that kind of what it is for panorama? Or is that just paying for panorama?
It's our contract service with them.
So it's what we already have with them?
Yeah, that's not new.
Okay, so this is not new money? This is a comprehensive? Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Can you?
No, no worries.
Can you please go back and clarify for me the positions that get trained? Who gets trained in SCL again?
Well, there's eight, there's, every building has an SCL champion, and then there's a district-wide coordinator that we're looking to hire. Everybody gets trained, but these are the folks that are leaders in this training. These are the folks, these are the, train the trainers.
Okay.
That receive their support.
Okay. Thank you. Does the, I know there was an October 2022 survey, panorama?
Correct.
When, either when do we see that data, or how does, how did that data inform this? Or any of the other topics we'll talk about tonight?
So the, that data is actually part of our interim goals. And so I'd have to pull up the monitoring calendar, or interim guardrail, sorry. That's part of our monitoring calendar. So we administer that again here in another month, about another month, to get fall to spring data.
Okay. Thank you.
Update. Hoover 17, whoever they're playing, 24. Commentary, deeper hole now, low-scoring game.
Let's go Huskies!
Can I ask one more question? And stop me if I'm getting too deep into the woods with the whole, the questioning here. I just want to have a better understanding of the SCL champions and just getting an understanding of what will their role be, like in this, what do you hope to see from having the SCL champions? And then looking at this being a stipend position, just thinking about, you know, we hear about teacher burnout already, and thinking about adding another layer to someone else's job? If you could just speak to those two things.
Yeah, so their role is to train, support, provide professional learning for staff around SCL, both for adults and for us as a community of learners, and how we treat one another and how we serve one another in our daily spaces. And so we train them through the train to train their model. Castle trains them, and then they are to deliver that to their staff. So that's, it's receiving it and then turn around about facing it and applying that learning to their staff and working with their school leadership team. And it's everything from, you know, how do we look at data? How do we look at our intervention teams? How do we actually, how are we analyzing the data that we have in front of us with an SCL belief and mindset and spirit about us to make sure that we are approaching the situation with the uniqueness and the complexity that it actually deserves? Because as we know, every situation is complex. It's not the same. And so it's continuing to bring that to the forefront. What it looks like in a classroom specifically, because these are part of instructional strategies too, and this is where you actually team students, right? So if students, the classroom level specifically has a welcoming and safe environment where students, all-inclusive, and I'll use the phrase all-loving, all-inclusive, then that also gets taught and translated into those student teaming activities, where students are trying to solve complex tasks like in algebra. But in order to do so, you got to have a highly functional and communicative team. Those LCL, SCL practices allow students to learn how to actually work with one another to solve these tasks and these problems.
And to clarify, we already have champions in each building, but this is adding someone who's going to kind of oversee, keep the wheels moving.
Well, the, the actual partner service is the, the contract itself with panorama to continue to have that, that as an assessment and to have their data and their research behind it. But yes, you're correct. We are adding, in terms of staff members, that 1.0 back.
And a summit.
Yes.
Great.
Is this the summit that we've done in the past but haven't? Yeah, culture and climate, or is this maybe a little different?
It's different. Yeah, this is not at that scale. That's, that culture-climate That's, that culture-climate summit was about two thousand. This is not that. This is just our staff. The investment type by engagement, again, same format. Want to highlight some of the newer areas of looking at twenty-first century professional development. There's some new professional learning that we're going to provide to staff as well as looking to add a twenty-first century coordinator. School programming. These are areas specifically at elementary school. We're going to talk a little bit about this in terms of recruitment and retention too. But one of the things that our families, based on just wait lists, what they, that they ask for us, from us, is opportunities to engage kids, both in metro kids, after-school programming. And so there's going to be some intentional investments, again upwards of six hundred thousand dollars, in adding more sites and creating more activities and opportunities for students at the elementary level after school. And so in order to do that, we need a coordinator that's going to actually oversee that and make sure that they have their pulse on what's happening from site to site as we begin to expand and grow that twenty-first century programming, but specifically that programming after school at elementaries and as well as that metro kids programming. So we're going to invest some dollars specifically to get that done.
Matt, I have limited knowledge around the CCLC programming, but I thought it was a federal program that is designed to cover costs, not to be additive. And so it looks as though DNPS would be paying for additional professional development coordinator. Just trying to understand that.
Because we blend, similar to our pre-K, our braiding of funding, we braid funding to create a more robust after-school experience at the elementary level.
Tell me about the overlap with community school coordinators and I feel like there's a lot of community school coordinators that are really engaged in bringing in those after-school programs. How do you see this investment working with that? Or pivoting some of their time and resources? Like, how do you see that working?
Yeah, there's going to be some connections to that. This particular position is a coordinator at the central office level that will allow us to make sure that we're braiding those funds appropriately and maximizing, optimizing our daughters' dollars. But yes, there will be a connection with community school coordinators at the elementary level, for sure.
And if this is too easy to, just shut it down. Knowing that part of our challenge with Metro Kids has been staffing, is there anything that is going to specifically address that recruitment-retention piece?
Yeah, we're working on number one, raising the rate of pay for folks. And then that recruitment and retention piece is also key in terms of, which is, I think that's the twenty-first conversation as well, about investing some dollars and how we're going to advertise for that. Yeah. Nope. Okay. Investments in health and well-being. So for FY twenty-four, we actually celebrated it earlier tonight in terms of, thank you again to the city council around their three hundred thousand dollar investment in food entries. So we added that, this particular slide is that investment. So again, that's going to, that's going to serve a lot of students and a lot of families. If we work our way down to DNPS programs and staff, you'll see school-based mental health therapists and wellness champions, school counselors, grief team, these are all in-kind services. These are folks that we already have on staff. We're going to continue to invest in these areas. We also have health and well-being teams, again, in-kind. These folks are already on staff, similar to that of SEL. And so these are folks that champion that Healthy You program, where if folks participate, it takes off some of their dollars. It saves them money by participating in our Healthy You program. So continuing to offer that for all of staff is important. So making sure that we have those wellness champions and those wellness teams at schools is something that we're going to continue to do.
When would the right time? So in looking at this, it looks as though there are no cuts to school counselors. And I guess I want to confirm that. And then also, is the counselor-to-student ratio decreasing? Right, so, I mean, ideally, that's a, that's a goal over time, is to decrease the ratio. So even though we're not cutting people, is the, I would assume the ratio is going down because of the enrollment trend? But I guess I want to confirm.
Yeah, so the, the national model of ASCA model is two fifty to one. And so we, that's the standard that we're working for. It's a little bit different at each level. I think the high schools have the best ratio. They're just under that three hundred to one. A little over three hundred to one at that middle school level and similar to that at the elementary level as well. So I think your question specifically was, is are we reducing counselors? No, but based on lower enrollment trends, is that ratio improving? Yes, just for the wrong reasons, right?
Yeah, okay, that's actually great. And then maybe the follow-up to that is, there is this intersection, I know Jenna's brought up, CSEs. I think about the role of success workers. Is it implied in this as well that success workers are a constant?
Yeah, they are. Like, we're actually adding some success workers to the district allocations. There's some community school coordinators that have, are, have left or leaving the district. And some of those we're not filling. Because, for example, we've got two small elementary schools that are near each other where they can, that one individual can serve both schools. So we're maximizing and optimizing, I guess, their time in those smaller spaces like that.
Is it a direct one-for-one? Like, let's just say four community service coordinators left. They're replaced with four people?
They're not necessarily replaced. And so that might be
They're, they stay in direct service, maybe said differently?
Yes.
Right, so four people who've been providing services? Yeah, okay, I think I'm good.
There's still a direct service provided. We haven't, we haven't lost our service
Yep.
model. We may have just maybe the ratio, the number of students being served to that caseload. Is that helpful?
So we're losing coordinators but gaining success workers?
In some degrees, yes. In some instances, yes. We have not filled some of the positions and some of our coordinators.
If I'm not mistaken, in our previous budget discussion, there was a discussion about that. And if I'm not mistaken, there were some numbers applied
I think there are numbers on that.
To those positions as well. So I would maybe ask people to reflect back to our February seventh conversation because I do think there was a reference there to this very discussion.
Yeah, I'll have to pull it back up.
Yeah.
I can't even recall.
Yeah.
No. I'm going to stay on health and well-being for a second, in case there's any more questions.
So the investment that you're making, the point one seven, that does include success workers?
Well, so this is, in terms of this investment, that doesn't constitute all staff. Right, there's, this is only specifically speaking to these things that are on this list. So, again, the italicized school council, things like that, if we added school counselors to this, that number's significantly higher. If we added all of community school coordinators to this, significantly higher, well into the millions, just for salary and benefits alone. Yeah. I'm going to stay here just a second, just in case. We can always come back to it for sure, but
Yeah.
Okay. Investment type by school security, this is, the last two categories are where you're going to see the most significant investments. Oh, sorry, there you go, Shashank, thank you. So in school security, you're going to see a total investment in FY twenty-four of thirteen point two six million. And there's several news added to FY twenty-four. Specifically, if you stay in that material section, there's a patrol vehicle, safety equipment for new staff, and there's also what it says as a weapons detection system. We earmarking dollars right now as we are having conversations regarding, a weapons detection system is the newest version of metal detectors. So that is where that conversation is coming from. It was lifted up on more than one occasion in our community meetings. And I know our district-wide safety team has been in conversations around researching and the weapons detection systems and what's out there and what that might look for us, look like for us as a community and as a school district. And so there's more conversations we had there with our community and with our staff. But we definitely wanted to earmark those dollars should that be a direction of an input that we're going to make.
Those are just the material costs, Matt? And so are the staff costs reflected somewhere in here too?
There are, yes.
That's true.
Yes, on that third row there on DNPS programs and staff, are you saying staff as related to the weapons detection system?
Yeah, so if you needed staff to monitor the weapons detection system, are they reflected somewhere?
Yes and no, right? So that's part of the question, right? It could be existing staff, right? So, which would be, that's where the conversation really lies is, we had a similar conversation in several community meetings around if we place up a weapons detection system or a metal detector, placing it there is one thing. Having somebody walk through it and something go off is something else. And so who's trained to, at that point in time, to handle that situation? What does that look like? So there's lots of conversations that we would need to have around that, that again, that are very much a community conversation. I know the safety team right now is looking at several models to even potentially bring in some demos to know what that looks like to walk through and feel that go off and what might we do to handle that? So there are some, of course, there's lots of things that we can read and learn about. We can go see some districts that have this, but that's what that team is charged with doing. But we wanted to make sure that we earmark those dollars should that investment be something that we make for FY twenty-four. Other investments include additional training, things like that. When we talk about perimeter awareness training, that's, that's training both for central office, public safety staff, as well as school-based staff around crisis response. You know, NIMs training, which is, you know, some of our state training. So there's some specific money set aside for inputs around just training specifically. If we look at that third row around DNPS programs and staff, this is also a major investment to the tune of five point eight four million dollars. What that includes is about fifteen positions. And so four of those positions are additional safety patrol officers, our own public safety staff. One point oh of those would be a dispatch position that's on with our, the Des Moines Police Department. And then we looked at, there's a repurposing of staff of that ten point zero FTE of metal restoration coordinators. And so combined, there's a fifteen FTE add to staffing that we've accounted for in our reductions. But there was, so there was a repurposing of that. Again, all of this to make sure that we are providing the safest environment possible. We've got that restoration coordinator position at the high school level and got really good results out of that in terms of not only leading the training and development for staff around restorative practices, but also building those connections with students and building those connections and those relationships with families. And we've gotten really, really good results. So we're going to replicate that model at the middle school level, campus monitors and a restoration coordinator. The partners and the service providers are associated, again, with some of those trainings and some of those staff members. So if you look at, again, collaboration with the DMPD and Des Moines Fire Department, continue to contract service with them and that partnership of being in at all of our activities, all of our athletic events, that's worked really, really well this year. Continue with that. And we've also are continuing They've got great results when it comes to students attendance and credit acquisition. They are also doing some things in their respective spaces to continue to analyze and monitor safety based on recent events. Starts right here. And so they've already got some things in place there in terms of a, a public officer, a public security officer that is there actually in the building. He is then the individual that actually lets you in and out of the building. So things in place there. So we're, and we've got a great partnership with them, just like we do with Urban Dreams.
Matt, can I ask a?
No, I was, I was just going to ask, when those shifts and changes are made with our partners, is it done in anticipation that we will cover those costs? Or is that just part of the cost of operation?
Part of the cost of operation.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Matt, how many public safety patrol officers do we already have? And what does adding four more look like? And in my mind, I'm thinking of like, are they at schools or going all around to all of our buildings? Can you tell me a little bit?
Right now, the answer is the latter. They're going around to all of our buildings. And there's eleven of them. This would give us fifteen total patrol officers, if you will. And these gentlemen and ladies work twenty-four, seven. So this is not just a Monday through Friday during school hours. And so this allows us to have them strategically placed in buildings and times where we need them, where we need their presence and their patrol car just to be a deterrent. And so this would allow us that opportunity to get that done and not stretch them so thin. Because we've lost folks because we've stretched them so thin in the hours and the overtime that they're getting, the additional of four more officers and that dispatch liaison with the DMPD would allow us the right ratio of being able to cover our schools, particularly at the, at the prime times of drop-off, dismissal, lunchtime.
So this is not a change in strategy? This is just additional staff to be able to better execute on our existing strategy?
That is correct. It's funding our strategy to be more effective.
Would you, would you go back to the professional learning and talk about crisis prevention intervention? Tell me again, or can you share again what, how that's different from the perimeter, perimeter awareness training?
Sure.
And who gets trained?
Yeah, crisis prevention intervention is de-escalation.
Okay.
And so it's those situations where we need training in order to bring a volatile, potentially volatile situation down quickly so that we don't get into a situation where there is an assault or some sort of a physical altercation. So that's the opportunity that, when there is a physical altercation, it's the same training that allows us to know how to properly restrain an individual to make sure that we keep them from hurting themselves or someone else in the process. So that's CPI.
Who gets trained in that?
So, and specifically, restorative coordinators, campus monitors, school leaders, school administrators. Am I missing someone? Special education staff.
Okay.
The perimeter awareness training is training around those state standards and guidelines around disaster recovery. And so it's more of a larger scale, you know, tornado event, things like that that take place.
I want to, are you good with me? Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Well, who gets trained in the second one?
That's going to be, there'll be some school-based staff for sure involved in that. Administrators, again, campus monitors, things like that. Folks that have, what's the phrase I'm looking for? Site command, if you will, principles around if something were to happen a large scale there that they have site command, so they know what the training is around state standards. And then central office, public safety officers, you know, myself, maybe members of my team, anyone that's going to take site command over a situation in a major disaster.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted, it's interesting, I pulled out the, from the community listening sessions that you did last year. And it, the Heal and Thrive report, and it had recommendations. And so it's really great to see some of those recommendations here. So I have two questions. One is, what, what didn't make it in here that you would just want to say out loud? Like, we just don't have the money?
SROs. And it's not necessarily about money. It's about philosophy right now. So it's still conversations. These things are not, there's no door shut on that.
Okay.
But that would be one.
And then, the, the one thing that I don't see, and I don't know how critical it is, is the IGNITE, unless it's somewhere else here. So if I'm understanding this correctly, community school coordinators trained in IGNITE to support transitions and develop peer mentoring programs, is that?
Yeah, we wouldn't include it. That's around creating those summer learning opportunities for students that are going from fifth to sixth grade and eighth to ninth grade.
Got it.
Around transitioning in those, you know, pivotal years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, you spoke of instructional safety during monitoring and the importance of that for learning to
that for learning to occur. We use the word safety that is not addressed in this specifically, correct?
Yeah, I think that would, the instructional safety aspect of that would be addressed in SEL.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that, that school safety, again, based on community conversations, based on data and tragedies, these inputs of 13.6 million in school safety, something the team and I and the community feel strongly about. So added to that, and again, this would be the, the sort of, the last, at least of tonight's conversations regarding the investments and inputs, is around that cybersecurity. And again, I think that is specifically speaking to staff safety and students and families, of course, too, around just feeling that, that competence and that piece and that their, their personally identifiable information is safe. And so continue to invest in our cybersecurity and the hardening of our environment and strengthening our cybersecurity posture is what this particular set of investments represents. You'll see a $3.61 million investment in this. And again, these are, you'll see the, a large bulk of that is in that 1 million of program and staff. And what, the reason for that is because our current technology team, it's a different skillset in terms of cybersecurity versus just technology maintenance and maintaining the environment. And so what you have listed there are some examples of specific skillsets and positions that we will be looking to hire. And this is based on our interactions with our consultants at the state, looking at the state chief, state chief information security officer, and also speaking with our consultants with Delphi around the positions that we need around just cloud engineers and project managers to make sure that as we are coming back up online, that we're doing so safely and we're doing in a manner that actually strengthens our cybersecurity posture and our, and we harden our environment to keep threat actors out.
So I have a couple of questions. How many districts have such a team?
It depends. So I don't know the exact answer to that, but as you get into the larger districts, the larger urban districts, many of them have more and more of these positions. And the cybersecurity challenge of school districts today is not the cybersecurity challenge of two years ago, three years ago. This is very, very new in the education system to the point where in our interactions and consultancy with the state, they are looking to do more work broadly as a state cybersecurity team to support school districts, knowing that many threat actors are now targeting K-12 schools.
Do you think that would mean investments at a state level to help support such a team or AEA?
It would be great. It could be, there could be some AEA involvement. And so one of the opportunities that we have in front of us, and you'll see it listed under partners and service providers, is a chief information security officer because we're looking to contract those services with our state CISO.
And then do we think that this team, I mean, obviously, there's no way to predict true prevention, but I mean, what would they provide for us as a level of security to know, like, would we not have to be offline for two days? Would it, like, tell me, hiring this team, what that would, what kind of assurances we would have?
Yeah, so it, it, it hardens our, our perimeter, right? So this is all, these are the folks that, these are the engineers that are able to design our, our firewalls, our cloud security systems, our backups, our, whether they're, learned all these terms, on-prem, right? Whether these are backups on premises or these are cloud backups, these are folks that design these backups to make sure that we fail to a backup system that gets us back up and running in an hour, six hours, eight hours, as opposed to two days. And so they do that kind of work. They also do the integration and the continuity business plans around making sure that we've got more than 20 different applications that we utilize for data and information, making sure that these applications speak to one another. And so there's, there's some coordination that takes place with some of these positions to make sure that anytime we're going to adopt a new software, that it actually speaks to our system and we can make it work for the needs that we have and not have to spend just an additional amount of dollars just because, you know, we wanted a different set of data. So there's a lot of business and sort of cyber continuity that these positions bring that they have a certain skillset for. Again, some of these we can look to contract services with. Some of them we want in-house so that we're nimble in the case we are hit again and/or when we're hit again.
I guess I would, I think the only thing I'd call out is, if I'm allowed to express concern, this is a significant investment in highly skilled, highly technical, need-to-be-trained employees. And I think about how we outsource our attorney to a third-party firm. And I just want to express a little bit of concern about in-house versus, and I heard you say it, it might be a mixture of both.
It could be both.
But I would just say that, and then I'd want to understand what type of contract, contractual obligations we have because this is a significant price tag.
It is, yes, absolutely. And the, the price tag is justified based on our current reality of our, of our own situation and the cyber attack that we experienced January 9th. We're still not up and running with all of our systems. And so we, in many respects, are making it work through workarounds and still don't, again, Tableau, for example, that pulls all of our information and allows us to filter it in a manner that makes it presentable, that's not up yet. And so there's, it was a significant hit.
Yeah, I would follow up on what Jackie said. It feels like hitting that sweet spot where we are procuring services versus building an infrastructure of staff to provide those services is where we need to sort of balance our approach.
Absolutely.
So understanding sort of the depth of need and what needs to be in-house versus what can be sourced is, to me, sort of the approach. I'm not trying to tell you what to do, it would just be how I might approach things in my own business.
I'll concur with, with both of your comments, Jackie, and Tara, that's exactly what we're looking at. We're earmarking these dollars, knowing that the expertise doesn't currently live in our system. And so how we procure those expertise and that information and that, that knowledge could look a couple of different ways. But we wanted to make sure that we invested inputs and held dollars to make sure that we had a, a very strong game plan moving forward.
Yeah. Well, I think the, the mitigating factor here is we don't want to have a repeat. So what does it take to preclude that from happening? Not to suggest any system, you know, couldn't be, you know, infiltrated, but how do we up the ante with regard to where we are and what does that look like?
Agreed.
Is cyber insurance come out of the management fund? Okay, so this is an all general fund, that 1.71.
That is accurate.
Okay.
And, and just to add, we actually had a meeting last month with the state CISO. And he had a few other players coming over there, and we had some key players from our district. And they are piloting a program. They're going to help us as we walk through it. And then as we walk through it and we understand the needs to the point that both of you mentioned, it could be a combination of both those things. So we have some expertise coming in from the state department also, helping us as we make these decisions.
Yeah, we've also interacted quite a bit with Homeland Security on services that they provide as well.
Quick update.
Oh, go ahead.
Quick update. Hoover down after 3:39, 28, and Chase Henderson filed out.
Say it together. Go Huskies!
Nothing that has to be answered right now, but as I'm hearing this and, and thinking about what you've just described with cybersecurity, I'm contemplating the loss of investment that has occurred since January 9th and the team members that have not been able to fulfill what, what their roles are and their intent is currently when it comes to investment in our students and the technology that they're using, the technology that our staff are using. So that's just something that's kind of swirling in my head that we have to consider. Yes, this is a significant investment, but we've also lost a considerable amount of our already invested dollars due to, you know, just our data teams not functioning as intended, our technology teams not functioning as intended. And, you know, as I was saying earlier, you know, throwing out AEA, I recognize the, the complexity that exists with outsourcing and/or considering a state resource or a combined resource with other districts, that sort of thing. The infrastructure that we have as a district is so different from the infrastructure that every other district has, whether it's rural, urban, you know, large district, small district. And to, to consider what that looks like to request assistance from a state entity or an AEA, maybe, I don't know how that would be an efficient or effective tool, just, and those are some of the things that are swirling as, as you say that. So thanks for that time.
The only other slides left say thank you, and they talk about March 21st.
I have two questions to go back to, if that's okay.
Please.
Okay, so in safety, I forgot to ask this. The governor, the status of ESER funds, the school safety initiative from the governor, remember she announced that and it was to focus on safety infrastructure? Have we done that? Was that just an assessment or do they actually pay for any material costs like the ones listed under?
It's in, it's in some of these material costs. I think it was about $3 million total for us. It's $5,000 per school, but.
Yes.
So it's in a lot of these material costs, a lot of this perimeter security systems, windows, doors, locks.
Okay, so just, so the state is giving us $3 million?
Yes.
And therefore the investment that DNPS is making is 2.85, not 5.85?
Correct, yes, that's correct.
And a lot of it is coming from Save and Pay also.
Yes.
So it's not a general fund impact. And then there is also another grant, what is the name of the grant?
COPS.
COPS grant, yeah. A few million dollars, we could potentially get it from COPS grant as well.
Got it. Yeah, and I just think, I'm only bringing it up too because as we, as people look at this and the public looks at this, trying to figure out what is, what is money that's coming in? Because it's, we're not spending 5.85.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, similar to that same concept in terms of the 300,000 from the city regarding food pantries, similar concept, yep.
And then if, if you were to decide, I know that you're considering a policy around cell phones.
Yes.
What, I don't know where this fits, but it seems to fit in this general category. What material costs and/or other costs would go into executing on a policy like that?
Yeah, and I, I don't know the answer to that question. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make note of that as a follow-up.
Going back to school security, would you clarify the weapons detection system, that's for all middle schools or how will that be determined?
Well, that's a great question, right? So we've earmarked several millions of dollars for that based on the price tag that comes with some of these weapons detection systems. So like a lot of things, you can, you get what you pay for, so to speak. There's some that you could get for several thousands of dollars, and there's others that are several hundreds of thousand dollars for a single unit. And so recognizing that, for example, if the conversation with the community and staff is around all secondary schools, well, we've got 15 physical plant secondary schools and there's a lot of doors to these schools. And so there's a lot of conversations that still needs to be had. Because, I mean, it's not simple, but that, those are the realities of the variables that we have to talk through and think through about an investment like this. And if that is going to allow us to, and our students and our staff, our families, to have that sense of safety in the schools.
And so would that take additional conversations with the community?
It will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question regarding our investments, and you may not know or have an answer to this, but the anti-racist town hall findings were done in 2020. Do we have, are we considering a cadence at which we continue those? I, I believe that the collaborative problem-solving teams are continuing to work and that's a continuous improvement process, but the, the town halls, can you?
Yeah, those, the, the evolution of those meetings are done at the building level through those school advisory councils and lifting out school-based and community-based topics that need to be addressed. And then the district's evolution of that are the, the central office, community-based roundtables. Like, so we did some in the fall, we'll do another set in the spring where we're inviting members of the community to that very same space. So that's the evolution of it. So it's still going on.
Okay, so, so those town halls, we, when, when we see that, it is not just the data we collected in 2020, it is a continuous collection of data, including student voice, parent voice, community voice, teacher voice.
That is correct.
Staff voice. Okay, thank you.
Other board questions?
I have one other. It's around mental health. I mean, we, we know that's a significant issue. You're continuing to invest in Beacon and other things. With the shortage of mental health professionals, which I think sadly we've all just almost just accepted, are there issues or investments or things that you're bringing forth around any creative problem solving?
Creative problem solving. We've got, you know, the, the continuum of mental health services is, yes, there could be therapy from a mental health therapist, but there's also school-based council, which keeping those ratios low as possible is part of that continuum of support and services to students. Continuing to lift up and invest in our student assistance program that offers, you know, the, the mental health, of mental health services, not only to the student but to the family. And then, of course, our employee assistance program, that also is a, is a, is a good, significant investment for our staff and for their families as well. Beyond that.
Then EAP, like, for the staff?
It is.
Yeah.
Other board questions? So we'll follow the format that we did after the last meeting, written questions directed to me, not later than Friday. I'll get those to the superintendent. He is taking some time off during spring break, so we will not have a 24-hour turnaround. We'll have a appropriate turnaround so that we can have access to those. Our March 21st session, student and staff recruitment and retention, activities and athletic facilities and infrastructure, and then a review of the unknowns, DBM, DMTRS, and the legislative impact from fiscal, from the current legislative session. And then at that point, if there are any additional outstanding questions, we'll have a, hopefully have a little bit of time at that meeting to respond to and provide follow-up questions. At that meeting, we'll determine whether or not we need to have a March 28th session or if we're prepared to move forward with adoption and certification. I want to just also mention, and Shashank, could you go back to the budget development slide, close to the very beginning? But I just want people to know that the annual budget will be sent and the tax rate will be published on the 17th. So that's coming up.
So I would just clarify, we send it to the register on 17th, so we have to finalize it internally. It gets published three or four days after that.
Okay, but just know that when we send it to the register, we will indeed be publishing the tax rate. We won't have the opportunity to increase the rate, but we could certainly. We won't have the opportunity to increase the rate, but we could certainly reduce the rate. So just want to make everyone aware of that.
I agree.
Madam Chair, I do want to point out, because we had this issue last year as well, if public feedback is being requested on or around March 22nd, there's not a process for us to listen to the feedback, digest the feedback, and discuss it before April 1st, if we don't meet on March 28th.
Yeah, so aren't, are the, partly, but the community conversations over the last week, that's also part of the feedback, correct?
Yeah, so this is just one last opportunity.
It's just one more time.
But I thought we don't, but have, should we be opening? Right now, nobody can comment. If you didn't come to a meeting, maybe I'm wrong, if you didn't come to a meeting, you don't have the opportunity to comment. So either we need to open that up now and close it.
I see what you're saying.
Change the cadence. I just, it feels, it feels disingenuous that we would ask for public feedback and not have an opportunity to actually hear it and process it in some way as a board.
So we have posted the deck that we shared last week on DMPS site. That is already available in case anyone has any questions on what was shared. Yes, they did not attend the session, that is true.
But the slides and the questions and answers are already posted.
Are already posted.
Correct. The response to the questions were, I mean, we responded to them as the session was going on, but the actual response on the site, we are working on that, because we got a lot of questions from all the places. So we will be posting those responses also on the DMPS site.
So perhaps in the meantime, until that's available, community members can email the board, and we can reflect that in our questions to the superintendent. Would that work?
Here's, let me just say why I'm struggling. If you didn't come to a meeting, I don't know if this is true, if you didn't come to a meeting, there's no other way for you to ask a question or offer public input on the budget.
Yeah, they could. If, I think to Kim's point, everything is posted on the district website. So if individuals choose to go out and review what's posted, and based on their individual review, they have questions, those questions can be sent to the board, and the board can then forward those to the superintendent.
Okay, we're doing it different than we did last year. Last year, it was just a direct, it was a collection.
Right, so I think part of the challenge is, we're bumping up against spring break. So, you know, trying to figure out a process and a system that in real time allows people the opportunity to not only ask questions, but for us to respond. Is there a better way to do it, Jackie?
No, I, well, I mean, I, we, this is the second year in a row that we found ourselves in this situation, so next time, maybe we plan better.
Well, I would offer, before you go any further, though, I would offer that we've provided the five sessions where we had hundreds of people, well, not hundreds, but 100-plus people that came, which is significantly higher than we've ever had in the past. And there were a number of questions generated there that we are attempting to publish responses to questions on. We know what all of the questions are, we just have to publish the questions. This is yet another bite at the apple, if you will, for individuals that may not have been able to come to the previous five meetings. So it's just yet another opportunity.
And all I'm saying is, it's different than it was last year, and so I do feel.
Change is good.
I'm not saying it's bad, I'm not saying it's good, I'm saying I feel like we have an obligation to explain to the public what their opportunity to provide input or ask questions is. So now what I'm hearing from you, that the way for them to get feedback is to go to the website, to review questions that have been asked. If they have additional questions, they are being directed to their school board members.
We also had posted, as the last slide, on the sessions that we shared, a link over there, an email address, so they can even send directly to the district the way they had done last year.
Right, but to Teri's point, because people should take a vacation, absolutely not disagreeing with that, we just have to, we probably don't want to encourage that, because we won't be able to meet that demand.
I think we have time to meet the demand.
Yeah, I think so, too. I'm a little confused.
I just want to know what the process is, really, that's all.
So I feel like we're building it as we go. So part of what we've already built are the five sessions where we have the benefit of people who attended and those that have already asked questions that we are providing written responses to. I think what we need to problem solve for is how we create the right space for people who attend this last session to be able to engage and have questions, or for people who didn't attend the other five sessions.
Correct.
Or this session, to be able to provide feedback and input. So this is what I'm going to promise I do, and I will work with Phil on this tonight, even though Hoover just lost y'all, 49 to 38. I will work with Phil and Shashank and Matt, and we will figure out how to get information to the public that has yet to ask questions, that is still interested in participating, get that link that Shashank has already mentioned out to the public, and allow that to be our process. Does that work for everybody?
Awesome, thank you.
Anything else? All right, have a great spring break. Our next session will be March 21st.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Shashank.
Written questions to me by Friday, and I'll get those to the superintendent.
Do you want a shared document for those written questions, again?
Send them to me.
Okay.
Just have the board send them directly to me.